There you go.
Okay, how about now?
Now I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you.
That's all right, thanks. Try, Donna, say something else to us.
I can hear you good now.
Okay, all right. Do I have to do the pledge again?
I saw you do it, you're okay.
Okay, all right. With that, again, we are meeting in person, we're also having it recorded and on via Zoom on Facebook for the town. Like to go through and have our introductions, board members, myself, Sue Smith, I am chairman of the planning board. And to my far right, we have Kevin Corson. And our newest member Karen Whalen. To my left is Dan Bargabas. And board member in front is John Shaheen. We are missing Carl Fockencrew, if I apologize if I missed that name. And Roy Smith. So to my left also, we have our planning board attorney for the town, Jamie Sutton. And next to her is our town engineer, Steve Snell. And also our code enforcement officer just came in, Bob Rodriguez. I do want to have a couple of recognitions here that first of all, we do have a couple of resignations. Donna, I want to, is one of them, that this will be her last board meeting, taking our minutes. I truly appreciate the work that you've done and the excellent minutes that you've provided us. She's given personal reasons for it, and we wish you the best, Donna.
Thank you very much.
And the other one is our code enforcement officer, Bob Rodriguez. He has resigned as effective, I guess, the end of this month. And he has graciously said that he would help whoever the new CEO is to to get through with a smooth transition. So I appreciate everything that you've done for us past year and a half. Okay, and also, I guess, a special thank you tonight to our Zoom manager. One Miss Renee over here, so kudos to that. So, the last time that we had a meeting was May 17th, 2021. Everybody had a chance to review the board minutes and look and more read them, are there any additional revisions to them, or do I have a motion to accept them as presented?
I'll make the motion.
John Shaheen.
I'm seconding the motion.
Motion, Kevin Corson seconds the motion. Any discussion, always all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. On our agenda tonight is the Carol O'Hara subdivision, 3988 Henneberry Road. Parcel number 013 dot dash 01 dash 28 dash 0. This is a preliminary review of a two lot subdivision. And there is nobody here from the O'Hara's to present the application this evening. We have received paperwork, maps, application fees.
Without an applicant, do we do the presentation?
Well, that's, that's the chair's prerogative. We can certainly look at it if you'd like, we could make some suggestions, we could then call them and let them know kind of where we stand with it. Call for the public hearing and hope to have something, I mean, we're here, I certainly think we can discuss it.
Yeah, I would like to, and she's been anxious, and Bob would concur that she's been fairly anxious on this.
I wonder if there were some misunderstandings.
The time, maybe, did you think it was seven?
Sorry. But the, the. Nobody here from the applicant, so.
I thought we'd hold her seven o'clock.
Yep, there you go.
Oh, okay.
Now, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Okay.
Can you give her a quick call? Make sure she's out of pay.
All right. Yes, in the meantime, real quickly, she has 22, almost 23 acres, she wants to subdivide off the house. Small barn, swimming pool, about four and a half acres, and leave the rest on Henneberry Road. Now, I had a couple of questions on it. Haven't been answered yet.
I wonder when we get our, our technical person, will we be able to?
Eventually, yes.
Put it up here, or put it?
On both.
On both, actually. Yeah.
Oh, even with somebody, their face on it, be like a Zoom kind of a thing?
Yeah.
Share the screen and put it on that one. Clicking my neck, wasn't it that one? The organist at church has all the mirrors to look at the choir and then he's got it back to.
Yeah.
Broadcast on Facebook or Zoom?
Just Zoom.
Cause Zoom.
Could not do Facebook. So.
But they can, I mean, they could go to Facebook to get the link.
But we chose to keep it simple because I'm substituting. And I didn't want to have something go awry because I'm editing that, so. This part, delay everybody, we're waiting to see if applicant is on their way. If you want, I can put this on mute and if you want.
Well, we're in a public meeting, so we're just going to sit here silently or?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Yep, we should keep it out, it's a public meeting, so. Do 15 minutes of training.
I was just gonna say. Off the top of my head.
And I'll take what you got.
Dan, did you mute it?
I did.
Do you have a copy of the application?
The last name Whalen is familiar, so is that part of the engineering?
I am recording in progress.
Excuse me, if I was, it can be muted, but.
I was an engineer for CDM Smith for 20 years. You went on at civil engineer. Got into real estate and I'm not going back.
So you're selling houses?
Yep, yeah, I love it, love it. And I like using the engineering in houses and basements and rating and trade, you know, I like that part of it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I really enjoy it.
I'm seeing this on the screen.
What company are you affiliated with?
Keller Williams.
Yeah, okay, correct. And Steve, Karen, what do you think about all this waving of home inspections and stuff?
I agree with a little bit. I'm actually encouraging, if people do do that as a, as a closing gift, I'm getting them a warrant to at least.
I've been telling everyone, yeah, always ask your realtor about a home warranty.
That's my closing gift, because I don't recommend that. And if, if really someone wants to waive an inspection, I'll walk through with an inspector as a.
Yes.
If you close out your video, does that enlarge the other picture? I'm just curious.
Escalation clauses?
No.
Well, I don't, it doesn't have escalation clauses either. I'm like, give me your best and most good way to make a large one. And it's very sticky.
Well.
Like, at what?
Escalate, right. What if you have two escalation clauses?
At what point are you?
Yeah, that's. But it does protect the buyer, but it's difficult to choose which one is actually higher depending on what, like, how you're interpreting the clause.
Cash offers versus the, no, no contingency offers, so where, you know, the real estate agents are presenting all the facts to the customers. They'll take a lower offer if it means no inspections. Or they'll take a cash offer because.
We're bidding on a house. 26 offers, how could that, oh my goodness.
Yeah, yeah, it's crazy.
I've been building houses for 37 years, now one person's ever paid me more than my asking price.
I started too early, you should have started now.
I'm still in it?
Yeah, it's crazy. Yeah, if you can find one. And that'll all come crashing back down soon enough.
It's heartbreaking.
My wife's niece.
I don't think it's gonna crash.
Cleveland.
I don't either.
Can they?
Don't settle down, but it's not crashing. If anything.
Not an inspection.
Because we're not building the house, it's just the over cost. We're not, surprise not being addressed. You know.
If you don't have an inspection.
And then when it is addressed, we're gonna have to arrange an order.
Right, right.
Let's keep that.
And that could have its own unintended consequences.
That's the expectation.
Right, I feel like it's. You know, markets, the markets are not being addressed, so. But it's that way with everybody.
Yeah.
So the message is fucked.
And maybe on the, on their way. Yeah.
Well, I like this early start, so I get home and have my dinner.
Exactly.
Exactly, exactly. We'll be out of here by seven.
Don't go.
Not so much.
Well, there was rumor that Renee was gonna start catering her. Catering the meetings?
Really? It's definitely a rumor. Okay, nice, huh?
Sure would.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember, I'm a vegan, so you can.
Are you?
Been for 30 years.
Wow.
I was a wrestler in college, I could eat more food and get my weight down.
I can't imagine how that must have wreaked havoc on wrestler systems, the way they made weight.
Oh, God, we were terrible. Talk about bulimia and.
Well, even in high school, I mean, I dated a wrestler for a while, and it's just like.
They don't do that anymore, though, they, they're pretty strict about.
Yeah.
Checking body fat percent.
Well, and they used to take, what was the, the, the thing that would?
Sir, a bippy kick?
No, there was something else.
That make you vomit?
It was a more, no, it was, make it run.
Dehydrate you, so.
And then.
Oh, X-lax or whatever.
Something like that, and then they'd end up.
I knew every trick.
Dehydrated and then hushed, so.
I gave blood one day to lose a pound. But I had to eat a pound, I had to drink a pound and a half of orange juice because I fainted.
Yeah.
I thought I was being so clever, you know?
Yes.
This is probably entertaining to.
Couldn't breathe on the mat, but you were, yeah.
The public is.
And I was in the heavy weight classes, slower guy, lighter weight.
We have an excellent team this year, won an Olympics, one of our best ever.
No kidding?
Wrestling teams, yep.
We have the best.
I love Olympics, I just, wait, just to see these athletes at the very top of their performances is remarkable to me.
Yeah, that's why the delay is so bad, because most athletes, you work to peak.
Right.
The day it starts.
Yeah.
Yeah. And when they delayed it, it just, they're, they're kids that aren't competing, it would have competed.
Right.
Right? That once in a lifetime opportunity, yeah.
Jamie, maybe if we could take this opportunity, the, the one law, or in the code there about the width versus depth, that, how that's calculated, or what kind of measurements?
Relates to the brickyard falls property.
I think everything, even this one, you know, has a.
There could be another one possibly coming that that might.
I didn't know we had that even.
It's actually in the subdivision regulation, so it's hidden. So it only comes into.
So it only probably comes out when you're subdividing a major subdivision.
So perfect, perfect.
I haven't heard of this. That's when you know you're.
Although, John, what I experience is, is with most people, it's like an assault on. It's what? It's an assault on most people, like, what do you mean? You don't mean?
Except excessive depth in relation to width shall be avoided. A proportion of two and a half to one will normally be considered maximum, and I know Steve looked at it for this.
Yes, I had, but for, for minor subdivisions, that seems restrictive.
Well.
But it's normally, it's not.
Want a little tiny swath and then a.
You might have five thousand feet of.
A flat block.
Yeah.
But it's not saying that, that, it doesn't give you a specific number, it says approximately.
Will normally be considered maximum, which tells you that it's within the discretion of planning board.
Right.
It's not a variance issue.
Right.
It's a.
So we can go a little bit.
Yeah, we're looking at this and this, yeah, we're not gonna let you do that, or we are, so.
Or because, because of the restrictions on the property, the topography or something, we might say, okay, you can go a little bit.
Yeah, yep.
Narrower a little bit.
A lot of times, if you're backing up to wetlands, you know, nobody wants the wetlands. The only way out is to just run these property rights.
Yep.
All the way through.
Yeah.
We did get the paperwork straightened out today for the other wetland, combining those slots.
Aye. Oh, you did?
Yeah, it came in today, they signed it April 14th.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So are you moving at all, Mr. Rodriguez, or staying, you staying in the town?
Oh, yeah. Except a lot more on, working with my daytime job, it's.
Morrisville still.
Yeah.
So many, so many hours in a day.
That's a lot to take out, and there's a lot of towns looking for it, of course, right now.
Yeah.
Doug Miller is my code enforcement officer now in Mayland.
Really?
He might mason that in the next little tangle, so that's always funny. Doug has a sense of humor. We joked about it afterwards, but he starts telling Adam because he started pouring in his faces, does a lot of footers, he's supposed to be building inspector Randy Capriati very well, and so they have a relationship and usually just shows up, looks at it. Concrete's there, you need to pour footers, and Doug was, you know, like 20 minutes late. So he wanted all the concrete dug out so he could see that the reride was in the right location. So the masons, you know. Explained to Doug, he says, you know, you're not as young as you once were, you know? And so they got into a little tangle and, you know, that, you know, just yelling back and forth and so the masons started shoveling away so we could see the reride and Doug was looking, well, you know, like, you know, talking and the, and the mason goes, you know, we've been doing Dan's houses for 30 plus years, my father used to do his basements and I'm doing his basements now. Doug goes around, wow, I've known Dan's wife since high school.
What's going on?
And that's when they started choking back.
You're not coming?
She can be here at 7:15.
So Doug, Doug is building inspector for.
Wow.
Manly.
Someone told her not to come to the meeting?
Filling in, she's saying.
Why would she?
So, I mean, it's. They had a real, oh, Randy was doing such a fine job, you know?
Is that it?
He had a job at, oh. Everybody's in demand.
It's the truth, well, it's the truth.
It was, it was, sorry, he's a.
Bad flow people. Yeah, watch.
I thought I heard Roger Cook is gonna retire too.
Well, we have one going on there now, and yeah, I heard that too, so it's.
Is that the applicant on the phone?
You had to take your house.
So.
Have to go in front of the planning.
You're gonna be here 7:15, we okay with that?
Very cumbersome.
Any sooner?
Very.
Can you get here as soon as you can, please? Yes, yes, I am. Yes, Carol, I am. Can you get, we'd like you here as soon as you can, please?
Where are they coming from?
Henneberry.
Henneberry, oh, okay.
So. I don't do anything in. That's been there for a long time.
Yeah, he's left.
Another good guy, too. A coach, very capable.
Okay, just, just an announcement for everybody watching, but we have contacted applicant and she is doing her best to be here by 7:15. Again, we apologize, but this is the only thing on the agenda, if you'd like to get things rolling with him.
Renee. If it's Zoom, that's all the people that are watching, correct?
There's only three people watching.
Oh, so you know how many people are watching?
See, I'll go down here, participants, three.
Oh, okay.
Or whatever that, I'm.
So are, are Donna and us two?
No, no, the, Donna, Donna is a, panelists are people that get.
Okay.
On the screen. Participants are just people, like, it's a webinar and you watch, so.
I actually watched the last town board meeting, and that's when I found out he was retiring.
Um, you watched it? I can't remember.
The whole why?
To see Renee.
And I watched our, I, I watched the meeting, I missed the planning board meeting, and I got all the way to hear comment at the end about me, so it was good to have it recorded.
Well, we did a little.
So, yeah, moving it up a half, I think we gave you another 30 minutes.
See the disc calculation on that question of the, the.
The show.
Sure wasn't John tipping you off?
No, I just decided to watch it, understand that, to record it, so you can go on the.
The one lane.
Go ahead.
It's the Facebook, you need to stay on the meeting, but if you have the additional depth for the side.
Yeah.
And keep that width the same.
Was there controversy at the last meeting at all?
Well, there was some public comment. It wasn't really during the board's meeting itself, I don't remember, but it seemed, it was a couple of public comment issues that came up that one about the extension of the year season into Christmas time, oh, wow. And the other was about an issue, signage issue on number two road. So, on your email, it wasn't anything really controversial.
One would be 2.9.
Cause I wasn't here.
You're never here.
I think it was just.
We don't.
It would be 2.7, which that's it.
That's right, this is, well, I wasn't on that, actually, even though I was probably not.
No, so it was.
I was gonna say for lot one, that was why, because we just.
Lot one is actually reversed.
You know what's interesting, business staying in a COVID mode, like our vet, you still have to make a call and they'll carry the animal.
I know, me, same here. You don't get to go in, I just.
They're gonna stay that way.
Well, I bet you they figured out that it goes a lot quicker without you over there. That's what I'm figuring. So, you know, then they call you from, they call me from inside. And I have a conversation with them before.
What's going on?
And then, and then they call me afterwards, tell me, and it really is quick.
Yes, yeah.
But I'm not sure I like it as much, but I, it's probably less traumatic for the animals, too, they're not.
Yeah, they're not having that.
Do you go village vet, right, in case?
No, I go to upstate Casamalia.
Oh, all right, I mean, just, they must be just this, this, it's a similar.
Casamalia vets have one part-time vet now. They used to do large animals, they were huge, yeah. They got bought out by some big group vet, and they only have one part-time vet now, I guess. Wow, yeah, they were big.
One part-time vet? I know.
Kaz vet in Nelson, have one part-time vet.
A nice facility for just one part-time.
You know, they used to do large animals also, Jerry Cold and Kenicki and all those guys, and now it's just well, they, they got bought out by some big.
Corporate.
Corporate vet firm.
The rehabilitation for the equine rehabilitation, is that a veterinarian-like?
The one in Morrisville?
For lame horses, no, the one on Route 20.
It's college. It's Morrisville College.
Oh, that's there.
No, no, Nelsonaryville Road has Madden's farm, which is for retired horses.
This is before Nelson, I think. Between Kaz and Nelson.
Um, no, there's a, that Scanda.
Oh.
That's a rescue.
Oh.
Yeah, they had a fundraiser to replace some duck's feet at one point, for the $2,000 to $5,000 or something.
Duck, did you say duck?
Yeah, duck lost its feet and they had a fundraiser to get new feet for it.
How do you get new feet for a duck?
You pay a lot of money and go to Cornell, and they probably make a prosthetic duck foot.
Yeah.
Or else, if your elephant has a tooth, it could go to Cornell, right?
Yeah.
So, but yeah, when you go to Morrisville, there's a equine rehab center, actually, it's just on the other side of Nelson, almost.
Okay, then I got it.
That's the, that's part of SUNY Morrisville.
I think that's what.
Were they? Yeah, that's what you're thinking of, just past Nelson, yeah.
Where the campground used to be?
Yeah, the campground used to be in there. Buckwoods, I think it was, yeah, and that, that's a.
That's pretty impressive.
Equine rehabilitation, they've got a walker and a swimming pool and, yeah, like, they, uh. My daughter does, she is a pharmaceutical representative for Midwest vet, she's a specialist in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, her dream job. She's got a horse farm. And the funny thing is, it's the same drugs, like, our dog has a problem with lightning and thunder, she's on Xanax. But the price is like 10% of what it costs if you buy it for yourself, it's the same drug, manufactured by the same manufacturer, yeah.
But don't try to give your dog ibuprofen.
No, but the recent thing with the, with the opioid problem was people were hitting their dogs with a hammer. So they could get a prescription from the vet for themselves.
Jesus.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't want to hear that.
All kinds of tricks people play, yeah.
Can you sell your dog? Look over there.
Yeah, best dog.
Does a little cornfield still do large animals? I don't know if he does or not, I think he's on, I think he's on small animals. It's hard to get a large animal vet, and Marion Sears did the dust.
I guess he started out with large.
Yeah. Some of the schools now, when, when you became a vet, historically, you had to do the spectrum.
Yeah.
Everything from snakes to elephants, some of the vet schools are now allowing you to do small to large, because the money's in small animals. We spend loads of money on our pets.
The money is in it and there is less.
Oh, yeah, you're not.
The night calls.
Not just the middle of the night, but the physical requirements for large animals. Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough to find large animal vets now.
Yeah.
Straight, just down the street.
They got plenty in their vet program, but they don't want small ones.
Yeah.
And nothing wrong with it, but the majority are female in that school.
So, um, we have a dog that needs a heart scan, and we called Cornell. This was maybe three weeks ago, I called Cornell, and the earliest they could do it was like, I'm, that's how hooked out they are. Small animal side. It's funny to go to the hospital with a horse or a large animal, you go down to Cornell, it's just like going to a hospital, except the doors are bigger. And you go in and there's a triage nurse that does the triage, and then they, you know, you're in room four, so you take the horse into room four, and they come in and they start doing their tests and yeah, it's funny, stall just bigger, but.
It's the sort of. Yeah, but when you take your small animals, so.
Oh.
My kids are playing soccer, we're emergency room a few times, and then we have a little cat that's having a problem. We take it to Cornell because the vet told us to. We get there, we sit down, and my cat received infinitely better care than my children did.
Oh, I'm sure.
They're bringing counselors to my wife and I to try to help us.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Trauma.
Yeah.
You can keep the cat.
Exactly.
What's it gonna cost?
Yes, yes.
Like, you know.
My sister-in-law lives on Indian Hill, she raises some piggy goats and she had one with a.
I remember.
Took it to Cornell to get it fixed, and they were like, oh, this is great, we can write a book about it, and, yeah, it must've spent a few dollars.
Yeah, they gave her an outfit.
I had, they do some pretty interesting things down there.
Not sustainable.
Right, sure, we can Google it, right, so.
And they have some interest, they had a, Fitz was his name, he was probably the top professor on equine nutrition on the planet. Like, Queen of England had a difficult time with horses, he went there, they had a guy that was like the top bee expert in the world, you know, they have so fascinating.
Yeah.
People down there working at Cornell.
You're absolutely great to have it. You're absolutely great to have it somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Thing, it's.
I was like, yeah, we might get home.
And actually, it's not that expensive. Because it's a teaching college, yeah. Relatively speaking. Okay.
So Kevin, the horses over at Madden's, they're all retired.
Yeah, yeah, you put that facility together, ones up on the hill there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're right across.
I know you are. You put up a new. I just was down to the. And I saw the.
House.
Yeah.
My, my road was straight from there. Living there. From Madden's, yeah, it's our farm.
Oh, I didn't realize. Yeah, I didn't realize you were on Nelson Avenue.
Yep, yep, it's uh, as you go past the Madden farm, it's just down on the right. What's that?
You been to Madden Taco?
Have. My, my daughter and uh, well, it's not my farm. It's my daughter and her husband's farm.
They have a wide variety of craft beers, which is very nice.
It's very good. They're, they're doing real well there.
Yeah, right at this one at the corner. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. You grab her out that way? Well, if I can ever close on my camp, I will be there all the time. But I can't find a good attorney who will handle it for.
Yes. Know what Shakespeare said about the attorneys, right? But that Madden retirement farm, I think you get six hundred bucks.
Live outside.
Board is crazy. Board is.
Don't know one seventy-three on from Manly's.
What time is it?
Oh, that's uh, Crawford, Al Crawford.
Yeah, that's, those are standard breeds, aren't they?
Yes, yeah. And, and Al Crawford, he just got into the right business. He loans money to doctors coming out of medical school. They love debt. Al said doctors love to buy stuff and, and that's his business. Crawford Company was his father's business and he got into standard bred horses. And the thing about horses, like in the thoroughbred industry, there's about fifty thousand horses born into that industry every year. The most expensive yearling ever sold was the Green Monster. Perfect breeding, sold for. Four point seven million dollars as a yearling. Got to the track and said, you guys go ahead, I'll catch up with you. Never won a race.
Wow, that's the worst thing.
And the winningest horse was Cigar and Cigar was a short-necked, nasty. Funny looking little horse that did not want anybody ahead of it. And wanted to get out of every race. And it's just such a gamble. And so they just breed and breed and same with the standard breed. It's got all those horses out there and hopefully. Coming up with one.
But boy, has he turned that farm around.
Oh, the whole place. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Put a few dollars.
For the long, I mean, I remember when I was a kid, we used to go there to get milk.
Yeah.
You know, and. But then it just fell into such disrepair.
Yep, he's really done a nice job with that.
The words in it?
It's on one seventy-three by, is it just past, just past.
Right at the crest of Palmer Road and it went down towards Channangle.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is the farm? What was it?
Gang family.
Was it gates? I just remember getting milk. I remember pulling up in that old. Crescent Drive and we'd get our milk and.
Yeah. You were talking about the Olympics earlier. The Germans are big about their equestrian uh, sports, especially the Olympics. There's a couple of farms in Germany that breed horses specifically to find jumpers. There's one that has twenty-five thousand horses. They have nine vets, full staff. They've got, you know, people living there training constantly to find that one horse that'll win the Olympics. Now, now. It is, it's a, it's a, you know, crap shoot. You know. When we had our children, we thought they would be, you know. Playing in Carnegie Hall or running in the Olympics. After about two and a half years, that dream went away.
Did you see that story on the news a couple of days ago about the blind girl that does jumping?
Yeah.
That was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
No, a blind girl? How do you do that? Do I completely?
She is a trainer that like paces out before every competition, paces out the number of strides.
She's gotta do it all.
Well, that's how a jumper does it. You, you have, the jumps are set up, so there's a number of strides that you ride. And that's what you're judged on. Also, jumping. There was an American Olympian back in the late forties after the war, led Polio. And she had to be put up on her horse and she was a jumper and she won a gold medal.
Wow, that'd be a good movie.
And most people don't know that our neighbor we're talking about, Beezy Madden, has three gold medals.
Yeah.
One was a silver that got updated when the German horse was found to have been doped at some. Of its bloodstream and she went from silver to gold. She's not riding in this Olympics though. Her horse is not quite ready. Who Springsteen's daughter is on the team. Jessica Springsteen is riding for the American.
Okay, there we go.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay.
Sorry about the confusion.
Me too. But I did finish long.
Okay. Don't get too comfy. Stand up. On the agenda tonight is your subdivision and. If you can basically give us a background of what it is that you're trying to do and then um, whatever questions that we have. Also that you're here to, to help answer those out too. So.
Okay.
It's Carol O'Hara.
Yes, that's my name, Carol. We've lived down at a very for forty-three years. And uh, lots of changes, including everyone here is new practically. Uh. Uh, I do want to, I wanted to divide the property. Uh, sell the house and four and a half acres. And uh, keep the field as a voice. Um. I don't know what else you want to know.
You're selling the, the. Well, you want lot one, lot two. Lot one is the parcel you want to sell. With the house?
Yeah.
And then the others that you retain ownership currently and just leave it vacant?
Yes. But when you say subdivision, I'm just dividing, you know, it's just two. One.
Right, it's a terminology that we use.
Okay.
Okay, just like. Before in our discussions, you know, like major and minor or simple or whatever. You have one parcel right now.
Right.
And you want two pieces of it.
Exactly.
So. Um, did you find out about that existing right away, what that is or where it came from or what?
No, I was sending for printer ink at home. Um, so I, I went, I went to the uh. Courthouse. And there was nothing that she could find with me. Um, and the deeds. So um. I just have to go back farther. Richards owned the house before us. They were also forty-year. Participants in the town of Pappy. So I have to go back and see who owned it before. Dave Richards.
Did you say it wasn't on the title? It's just on the drawing.
Correct.
But the drawing would have been based on.
What's that?
Yeah, the drawing would have been based on title and deeds.
So if, if it's not on the title.
I, I'm, I'm not following this conversation.
Right away on the map.
That it's.
I mean, control would have. Was, would have had to rely on something to know that right away was there.
A, a previous map.
Right.
So. You should. It is math. Does anyone have your, your abstract of title? Or this parcel? The history of the property?
I do have the uh. You know, the deeds, the abstract. I'm not sure I have that.
I think we would want, we would definitely want to find out where it came from, if it's in a, if it's in her deed, if it's. And who is? Who is the access in favor of?
Well, at the, at the county level. But it was the property behind me, which would be Pratt Falls Park. And uh, she said usually there's a right of way. If there is uh, no road access. They definitely have road access that could go through the park.
That doesn't necessarily mean that it's gone away.
True, so.
So she'd have to quiet title, so to speak. Something like that.
I'm not sure if we care. So it would be, I think we should have the information. But the fact that there might be a right of way running through that parcel shouldn't influence. Whether it's a subdivision.
But yeah, you know, who was ever gonna buy a lot one that, you know, if that's me, I'd like to know. You know, what the intent of that right of way was.
Well, sure, this, yeah, sure.
What is the planning board? It's not a board.
I'd like to see it. I don't think it's important, but I don't know what it is. But that would be my gut that it probably does not matter. It's not a, it's not a fee. It's not dividing the piece. Someone has access will figure out who it is.
And the property behind is Pratt Falls.
Current work, yeah. A lot of those are all logging access points to, probably report was given to the county or. What the county had it. Somebody needed to get back there for trees or something. Yeah.
It looks like, actually, it looks like his. Well, that's something we would like to know, certainly. And your surveyor may know or? You know, the ab- the abstract will tell you.
No, I think actually. The homeowner should know, correct?
The homeowner should know.
I mean, I should have the abstract.
Oh, but yeah, but someone would be able to help you find that information is my point.
When you bought, when you bought the home four years ago, that would have, should have been something that came up when they. Did the title search or got the abstract title. Someone should have said you have a right of way through there and this is who has the right of way.
And it, it was a surprise to me when it, when it came up.
For here, for this application. Yeah. Interesting. Cause that would definitely be something that the title company would. Want to know and you know, even, even in the case of a mortgage company, they'd want to know. Back in, back then.
So it'd be interesting to see what the surveyor says about where, how he arrived at knowing that was there.
See what you can find out and you can call me. Uh, is it better to call you up here or do you have a card?
Then I will give you a card. Yeah, I'm off, I'm off site.
And, and which part are you selling? You're selling the part of the house?
Pardon me?
You're, you're selling.
Lot one.
Lot one. With the house, yeah. So the right of way is on that lot also.
No, it's not.
According to the survey.
According to the survey, it is. It's.
If you divide this into two parcels, both parcels will have the right of way.
Right away, running through them. Which I suspect. Whoever buys that house, that issue will come up. If there's a mortgage involved. Yeah. So. Would be good to know.
Clarifying. Driveways. With the house that we can see, like a U-shaped driveway to the house and then another driveway that would. Basically followed the right of way. The lot two and Steve, you referred to a. Existing curb cut, but where did you see it on?
It's sketched on the, I had a hard time finding it. It's on the north side. A lot. See, there were some things added to the map.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Yeah. You got something written notes on what we're looking for or?
No, but I can get these the papers.
I have a question, Jamie, about the. Anandaga uh, park, that's Pratt Falls Park behind the property. They would be notified just as any other neighbor would be notified or is there? Okay, wouldn't be a municipality or?
It's not a municipality.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a, yeah.
So who do you send the letter to?
So because this is, is happening within five hundred feet of the next municipality, we would send that. And then to the municipality.
Say that again?
Like what, where it's.
It's Anandaga County Park. This is all on it in the town of Pomp.
Oh, it's in the town of Pomp. It says Anandaga County.
Anandaga County.
Kind of, they own that because it's Pratt Falls Park.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll send it to Anandaga County.
The park board, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, it's on here.
I thought it was in a different county.
They actually may have the information on the right of way, since it goes to their property. They may very well know that.
But anyway, um. So that would be the first thing to try to find out more.
Formerly.
What that right of way, who, what and where. On. Some of those maps. It's not in yours. Um, where you had penciled in. The well and the, the septic. To have that indicated on the map by the surveyor. Um, also where the curb cut is on lot two. So.
Uh, do you need more information on that?
The, you go back to the surveyor and ask them to. Put on the map. So this was in a pen scribble or pencil or an official part of the map.
Of where the, of the well and septic locations.
And the driveway cut for lots too.
Cause there are regulations as distance from the other. Property and whatnot.
And yeah, yeah, so discussion on that. The kind of setbacks of the existing buildings.
Let's go, now it doesn't, I meet the setback requirements or?
Just to make sure that.
Oh, yeah, right. So we know, yeah, what the distances are.
I, I think if it goes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. We need to know that distance to the front of the house.
Yeah, the front, none of the side.
And the side from the new lot. Same thing with the septic and the uh, water.
I mean, the, the other thing is if I, it looks like there's four curb cuts on that one lot. Certainly would be within the prerogative of this board to determine what would be appropriate number of curb cuts.
On which lot? The.
Yeah, there's actually four scetched on lot one.
Okay, I think Carol can help us out. The, there's probably one that's more southerly than the others, maybe? You want to give them the background on that one?
That's, that's a fairly new one, uh, probably twenty sixteen. And it goes to the field. It's a, you know, farm cut. Right by the uh, stone law, the other. Existing uh. Property line.
Okay. Did you put that in or farmer or?
We did.
Okay, you got um, driveway permit from the county when you did that? And you've continued to use the two in front of the house and the one where the proposed lot line is?
I don't use the one up by the curb. That might be uh, that might be a sight distance thing.
Okay, and here it looks straight, so you gotta help us out a little bit more, being definitive. The one nearest a lot. The new lot line or one of those right in front of the house?
One of those in front of the house. Those are all fine. The three in front of the house. One goes to the backyard. To the garage. The two in front are the circle or the half circle. Went up by the curb. Was put in uh, when we first moved. What is that?
You just say by the curb. Does anybody see a curb?
There's a curb by Sterns. Let's see. Let's see. Okay, so let's see. There's the house. Here's the drive that goes to the back of the house. There's a drive down here. And it's one up here. This should be a curve. Right by Stern's house, there's a curve.
That's what's wrong. She just keeps talking about the curves and it's not.
Yeah.
To show a straight line. So where is that in relation to where the 2016 driveway?
It's at their opposite end. The 2016 driver, 2016. Is down by the. Stone fence. Divided by stone. You know that.
It doesn't show on here, so for us to visualize it.
Because you're into this job.
I've been on the planning work for 25 years and I've lived in the town for 35 years.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
It's just a little confusing when you're talking to us and something is not marked on here and you talk about a curve. Right now they're depicting kind of very there is straight, so. I'm just trying to, a little bit of help with the placement, but where are the driveways? Because all of these maps, they don't generally show us stone walls or anything. So if you know your property better, better than we do, but we've all driven by it. But if you could help indicate, okay, this is a curb cut up in here. Where is the driveway that you say that you put in in 2016? It's this one.
Yes.
Okay, that's the one that will be for lot two. Where's the one? The other one that you're talking about.
That you're talking about where there are four. Here's one, there's two, there's three. The other one is up here. This one goes this way.
Is she going north or south?
That would be on the south end.
I don't know exactly.
Okay, is that the one that you were talking to me years ago that? Having to do. You questioned about like how things change midway and they were talking about a driveway of it was okay back then, but it's not okay now.
Well, I don't know. I think the county probably has to do a site.
Is it all?
I know it's there. It's there.
Is it being used?
No.
Saw grass?
Yes.
Dan's trying to look at it on this overhead. Have you got anything coming?
Yeah, but I can't really see it.
Go to Google Earth and, and do the street view.
And Jamie's trying.
Well, I, yeah, I, I did get, I did get the listing for the property that's up. See if they've chosen something.
If they're shown on here, Carol, like if this one, if it is a danger, then it can be in our notes and documented. It's like it was curb cut. The new owner should not be using this or whatever. These are okay, that's okay. This one should be indicated on the map.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's another thing I should speak to the surveyor.
Yep, that's why I'm asking to make the list on that.
Yes.
And have them plot where the septic and the well is. Setback distance in the house, property line into the side yard to make sure that it fits within our code.
Is the northernmost driveway gonna go with it? Something I didn't.
That would be accessed a lot too.
Okay.
That's why it's important to have that one.
Okay, but well, you need to be separately parked from. Which is, what else do you want them? You want to know where the well from the septic?
And I see your map, Steve. There's a little bit of handwriting on there and so on. Those are the type of things the surveyor should be adding to this map.
Okay.
It's topography.
Yes, and we live in Palm people, lots of hills, okay? Ask them for the contour lines or topography lines. We know what the slope is on the land and it also helps indicate like for sewage. On the drainage and so on that everything's going the way that it should be.
And it can be estimated, doesn't have to be. For the, for both lots.
Do you have that, the file with the actual application or? Okay. He did have. Went over. He had four questions on the short environmental assessment form. Next month, Carol, when you're here.
You need these answered, is that correct?
That we're just, for clarification, those answers, they'll. They were incorrectly filled out on the application. Next month, when you're here. Just please be sure to meet with me so we can have you initial the changes on the application. That's all. That was number nine. I'm just recording the A through D. This is on county roads, so that this will have to be sent to county for their comments and review. Time wise, we're okay. We should get that back before our next meeting. Any other comments?
Do we, we have a list of things for the surveyor? Can we, will we deliver a list of things, Steve?
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's do that for Carol to make sure we get it right and get it to Carrie. So I'm telling you.
You confirm your email address?
C A S. O H A R A.
At gmail.
Can we read that?
No, I think, you know, like much, I think she gets, I think she's led her to the little charity as to what it is. And if, to me, if Gary has any questions, surveyor, you know, it's no trouble for him to call you, is it, Steve? No.
Yes, Steve or, or myself, we can try to answer the question.
Do you have anything, John?
No.
So, no, I could already give Carol my card. That's all I said.
Steve, Jamie, anything else that we're? It, it is fairly straightforward. It's just making sure the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Absolutely.
So topography, well location, septic location, setback, distance.
Driveway.
Two lines.
Contour lines.
Curve cut for what? Number two?
Curve cut.
If we assume that we might get this, should we put it on for a public hearing for the next meeting? Otherwise, we're a couple of months away.
I would like to.
Sure.
So that means you have to. You have to get in touch with the surveyor immediately and get this moving so that we can have. The.
Basically.
Revised map in our hands because we do need to send this to county. Which.
I mean, we probably can send it in its current form. But it wouldn't be something we'd be able to approve.
No, they're gonna ask those questions that we've asked.
They will.
Yeah. And that's fine. We'll just have them noted, right?
Right.
And that way she can do the notification between now and then of the neighbors.
Yeah, the, the other thing is I noticed that. We're getting these big maps and I'm sure Mr. Patrault can send it by PDF so then Nikki can send everything PDF. To the.
I was gonna ask for that, yeah.
Because, yeah, she and I worked together last time I do it. So I'm sure she's gonna be calling me again to make sure that it's out. And so. If. If Mr. Patrault can just send that by PDF.
FYI, county. Is that by Friday, the 27th? Friday, July 23rd.
To get it in time for our next meeting.
Their meetings on August 4th.
And our next meeting is. Are we gonna?
Sixteenth.
Same twice a month. Wouldn't we miss the second?
We meet once a month.
Right.
Oh, there's the next one. Their meetings on August 25th.
Just too late. Okay, so. The. Application. I'm asking for it.
So when is your next?
Pardon me?
When is your next?
Our next meeting begins at 6:30 on August 16th. This is in, I don't have that map in front of me. This is a district. This is in the egg district. The statement that we need to add for. Egg data statement.
Is that, is that handy? Is that, that egg data statement available that you could fill out now? No, okay.
The office was, they were, they were out of the clerk's office today when I came back, when I got here, so I couldn't get the file.
And, okay. The letter, we gotta make sure we tell Nikki. The standard letter to send out for the public hearing, so there may be some. Anyway, it's a leftover from. When you use. I will. So. What? Everything moves along what we'll need to do, Carol, is here's a list that we've looked up. And this is a list of all the property owners within a thousand feet of this proposal.
May I have a copy of that?
Yeah, this is, this is yours. I have, it has to be sent certified mail. And. Do you have a way to retype?
Sure.
I changed the time on it. I just wrote it in, but if you want it to look better, put. Type it.
That comes from.
You see, we could have typed it.
It comes from the town clerk.
Well, Nikki printed it, but you're the one that will be do the, do the mailing. If you want to stop back up and she can write, reprint it, but.
The right.
She should be able to tomorrow morning.
Or she could email it to her.
I was just gonna say, why don't we just have her, I can let the clerk's office know that the letter needs to have a date change and then they have.
Dates, okay.
It's time, it's the time that we meet and they'll just email it.
Yeah. Okay, so you should get an email tomorrow. From the town clerk. That will be a corrected letter with the correct time for our next meeting. All the people on that list, you send a copy of the letter. Certified mail to everybody on that list.
Okay.
That we also public notice going out and there'll be a public hearing here August 16th. It'll be on the agenda. And basically you'll be asked again to stand up and. Go through, basically what your intent is and. You should have the revised maps, answers from the county. And if anybody, any of the neighbors or public has any comments on it. And. Go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Next meeting also be on Zoom.
Zoom is going to continue as long as I'm town supervisor.
Just indefinitely.
I'm.
So, so.
Yeah.
The public hearing, can the public do it from Zoom? Or do they need to be here?
Yes, and by then. The true webmaster, not the substitute webmaster, will be here and can also have it livestreamed on Facebook, connected to Facebook.
So they get the comments directly.
People that can raise their hand and do their chats or.
Yeah, yeah, and the way to access it is just to go to the town website and there'll be a link.
It's both, you can, you can either go on the town website on the homepage and there'll always be a notice about an upcoming meeting with the link to Zoom. Or you can go on Facebook, our Facebook page and on our Facebook page, there's a posted notice. That there's an upcoming meeting, gives the link for Zoom, but it also livestreams on Facebook at the time of the meeting. And usually people that are on Facebook that follow us will get a notification that the town is live. And they can go to the planning board meeting. So and then they'll, they can.
But you don't need a password.
Not for Facebook, no, you just need to. But, and no, you don't need it for the Zoom.
You just have to put your name and your email.
Yeah.
Presumably.
I actually haven't done it as a participant.
I just did it here.
I've been an.
Yeah. Yes.
Can I have your email? I just gave it to Steve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you want her to have the, a clean copy of the, your last four pages or item nine so she can correct that?
She's got it. She's got a copy.
Or the application.
No, the actual speaker. She can just, she can just initial. We've done that before that they change it, but they, they applicant actually initials it. So and it's backed up in the file with the comments in the minutes too.
Is there something I should have?
Are we gonna get a clean copy? I will have her, I'll have, when she sends that letter, I'll have her send your application back.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Yeah, Renee, I had to get your name so it shows up on the screen, email address.
That's okay.
Get on the Zoom, you put your name and your email, so if you raise it.
So is 11.
Right, so if you ask a question, they know who's asking.
You gotta make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't do that.
Yeah, I, I'm not, we do a lot of work and there's some wizard.
Yeah, right. That's.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Okay. Do you want a copy of that letter that Steve and Jamie are working on or the bullet list for what we're looking for? From Carol? Or you got, you got all that in the notes?
I've got it all in the notes.
Okay. Just double checking.
If I got it all in the notes.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
If not.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll take an emotion.
Kevin, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, everybody. We, sorry for the delay, but we'll be a little more. Efficient next one, I hope.